Also allow us permission to record because I wanted to record, he said we have to get permission from the host.
Okay, you want to record too? Well, I want it to be orderly, so I can send the link to you when it's edited. So that you don't have those raw file like that.
Okay.
Okay, sir. So, Honoreables, I welcome you all to what we call the Shengen Virtual Town Hall Meeting. Shengen Virtual Town Hall Meeting. Now, what is, um, um, virtual? It is this, what we're doing now, connecting ourselves all over Europe without physically meeting. So, and this has come up because of the situation in the world, the Corona pandemic. But it's opening doors, doors for opportunities for us to communicate like this. With this instrument that has been put down for us, Zoom platform. And this is like more like an opportunity for us to begin to come together in unity and speak out, echo out our voice. And believe me, even if nothing works out now, through the process of time, our voice will be heard. So I welcome you all again, and it would be great listening to the various comments, submissions and insights that we'll be hearing today. So we want to go ahead. First of all, I introduce myself. This is Shengen Story Media, a registered company here in Italy, a media company. We are into news and media activities. It's headquartered in Milan, but it has officers and correspondents and contributors around Europe. So it's a European thing. Now, there has never been a time as when we are now. There are no better time like this in the history of Nigerians in the diaspora like now. The time when Nigeria and diaspora can come with great united voice and begin to make impact in our home country. So Nigerians and diaspora have one thing in common. And one thing we all have in common is a desire to see progress, good life for our home country Nigeria. The diaspora community in Europe is growing. So it is in our hand, like the Chairman of Nido said last time, with this population strength that we have. It is in our hand also to see and make effects to the change that we desire. So, and that change will come, hopefully it will come very soon. So I welcome you all to this virtual town hall meeting. There are small rules to the virtual town hall meeting. For those that are not panelists, but your special guests, if you have questions, it will be, will allow just one person to make, to ask a question. And please let everything be done in moderation. Remember, the officers, the honorable people with us should be respected. We won't want questions or any confrontation that is not necessary. So please, with all dignity and respect, let's put our questions if we have any. Today with one voice, we're going to ask, speak, and we're also going to make some affirmation, which I will say later. Each person is going to make a declaration and we're going to put it out to the Nigerian media. So I welcome you. The women are not here, so I'll start with the panelists, the officers and honorable with us. With us here is, it's a great pleasure and it's an honor also to have the Nido Chairman, Europe. Nido is Nigerian diaspora organization. The Europe Chapter Chairman is here with us. Thank you very much. That's Honorable Kenneth Bandy. I salute you, sir, and I say thank you for coming. Last time you gave some insights, useful insights to Nigerian situation and the diaspora. Also with us is the Nigerian Union of, the National Union of Nigerian Association in Italy. That is NUNA. And the National President, Honorable Samson Hodge is here with us. And it's also an honor. These are people that have tight schedules, but they've decided to make our time and be in this forum. So thank you so much, officers. Thank you for coming. Shengen Story is a media company. So like we always say, what we're really trying to do is to bridge the gap between leadership and the people, the ordinary people. Media, as you know, the press, like they say, is the fourth estate of the realm. That means that we are the ones that harness all of these arms of governance, legislative, executive, judiciary, and we put it all together and present it to the people. So that's what we are trying to do, create that atmosphere where people can understand what the leaders are doing. Sorry to use this word, but it is how it is. Waiting for our leaders, the politicians in Nigeria will take a lifetime. So it is in the hands of the Nigerians in diaspora also to see how we can make a change, make an impact, and make a change in that our home country. That's a dynamic, great country. So I want to open the floor with Honorable Chairman of Nido. Last time, Honorable, you gave us some insights to our being, our not being duly represented in Nigeria. Now, the question today is, apart from how, what do we do to be duly represented? Apart from that, the question today is, how do we begin steps? Steps to being duly represented in Nigeria. How do we start this thing? How do we tell them that we need people that understand the diaspora situation to speak on our behalf? People that have probably lived here, people that live in this situation. How can we get that out, Honorable Chairman Kenneth?
Thank you. The organizer, Shengen Media, for this wonderful initiative, the second in a row by popular demand. I thank my fellow panelists, especially my good brother Sam, who has been doing a fantastic job in Italy. Let me use this opportunity to say happy independence to my fellow compatriots. Although we are past the, past the October already, Oktoberfest already, but we're still in the mood of a, of a new celebration. Like I said last time, let me probably put it very, very clearly so that we can understand what we're dealing with. According to the available statistics from a journalist, from a group of journalists, a group, they call them the global content for African, African European project, aim at contributing, connecting journalists and journalism students in Africa and Europe, which actually probably you will benefit from their, from their, from their content. Over 14 million Nigerians have migrated between 2019 and 2014 alone. United States can boast of 3.7 million, followed by United Kingdom, 3.4 million, followed by South Africa, 1.2 million, followed by Canada, 1 million, followed by Malaysia, it's about 800,000, and Germany, 800,000. This data also revealed that Nigerians also migrated in higher number to Australia, with 700,000, Ghana, 67,600, Italy, 619,000, Saudi Arabia, 551,000, and Kenya, 547,000. It's important to break down these figures because we are looking at just a very short time period between 2009 and 2014. That is the power of the diaspora. And this no doubt have a huge brain drain in Nigeria, know that about it, but also has a bigger brain gain. Because all the things we have experienced in the diaspora, like you said, currently estimate that over 22 million Nigerians in the diaspora have learned a lot of things, you know, from, from the past. And like also emphasized last time, between 2015, 2015 alone, about 21.2 billion was remitted to Nigeria, which is against 19.6 billion from the oil proceeds. And also in 2017, Nigerians sent 19.7 billion and 22 billion respectively. This was higher than the, than the 10.4 billion and 13.4 billion generated from oil revenue. You cannot, you cannot ignore such constituency. So your question is, how, what do we need to do? I am speaking as Kenneth Bandy, not as the Chairman of Nido Europe in this matter, which means politically, we must seek to be politically relevant in Nigeria. It could be floating a diaspora political party, it could be affiliating with a political party. But whichever way, just like they said in the United States, whether we need to run or crawl, what's important is that we keep moving until we get there. Diaspora have to seek ways of getting relevance. And I think that one of those best way to do that, the politician sets the rules. And like Rufai said once, and I totally agree with him on that, that if such brilliant diasporans who have learned a lot of things over the years decide to leave the politics to, to what he says are political idiots and the rest of them. And of course idiots will make policies for us. So my call on my fellow diasporan is irrespective of whichever political party you want to affiliate with, there is a need for us to begin to get engaged in political affairs. Of course, we have NITCOM, which I've mentioned last time, which is supposed to be diaspora parliament. But in addition to that, whether they want to make it work or not is a different question. But in addition to that, we should not neglect the fact that we must get involved. Now, what I've seen that most of us also do, and I will begin to look at the presidents, we'll begin to look at the senators and the rest of them. Why there's nothing wrong in being so ambitious, you know, to get to those areas? Let us start from the grassroots. The world level, that's where our brothers and sisters live. They need our, our, our help there. Let's look at the local government areas. Then we can now move gradually to the, to the states and then federal level. So let us start building our homes, let us start building our villages. The diaspora, we're not going to die here. I do not pray to die here in Europe. I do not pray to die here in Germany. And so I have to start getting, you know, myself involved in helping my village, in helping my town, my city. And if God willing, in helping my state, put in this, in the state level and the federal level. That's what I will encourage everybody to look at. So we can debate about the economic benefit, we can debate about the social political benefit, but we need to transfer our know-how, our brain drain into brain game by getting involved in the political affairs of Nigeria. And not only looking at the federal level or state level, let us start from the world level and our local government. I will leave it at that. And I'll also take, you know, to beg beforehand that because of my other plan engagements, that I will not stay long on the forum. I can stay and listen, but because of the noisy background, I might not be able to speak. I will leave it at that now, at that, and thank everybody for, you know, for listening to me. Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you very much. So please, because I don't know where you live, sir, there is something we are going to do today. You will probably do yours before we leave. And that is, we want to stand with one voice. There is this incident, I'm sure we are all following what is happening in our country. When diasporans, people from outside Europe or the parts of the world come to Nigeria, in this recently, this COVID situation, Nigerian officials at the ports and the, the airports and the various areas of arrival, extorted money from these people. They extort money from the diaspora, that Nigerian person coming back home. They extort, they, they put them through situations that make it very difficult for them to want to come back next time. So, sir, I want us to do something. This is with, with all respect. I want us to speak with one voice. You will do yours now because we don't know where you live. I want you to say, as the President of, the Chairman of Naido Europe, he said, "We stand against all extortion, all bribes at the point of entrance into Nigeria on diasporans." I don't know if you understand me, sir. Do you understand what I said?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, so you're going to do that, and every of the panelists and whoever pleases to join will do this. We're going to collate it as one in the video and send to the media house in Nigeria. That we stand against this, we don't want this. How can a Nigerian coming back home is put in a process where he is frustrated? He feels so helpless just because of COVID. They tell you to go do this form, buy, take this form, go to this place, submit this, do that. And all this is not how things should be. So please, Honorable, if you can just do that, you speak, call your name and make that affirmation anyhow you wish to do it. But it is said to the officer, so we can send to the media house and see if...
Well, thank you, Chairman, for, let me say that, yes, Kenneth Bandy is my name, the Chairman of Nigerian Diaspora Organization Europe. And without, you know, laying emphasis on this particular one, any form of extortion is unacceptable, especially the diasporan who think that we're probably the milk cow of the nation. Well, I wouldn't be in, in the way of any COVID protocol to protect millions of Nigerians, millions of our brothers and sisters in Nigeria. But any, any form of extortion, if it is proven to be extortion, is definitely unacceptable. As a matter of fact, the diaspora should and will not, should not engage in any form of giving bribe on, 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 on things that are not supposed to be done. And then we are actually working on that and collecting, collecting statistics. We're asking the attorneys, Nigerian attorneys, who have experienced that, to make their own documentation and send back to the, to the headquarters. And if it is, if, as long as, as soon as we have our comprehensive information, we are going to hold the agencies and officers responsible for that. And so, yes, any form of extortion in Nigeria and Nigerians in diaspora are totally against it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That was, that was well taken. So, yes, it's a situation diaspora by themselves now in Nigeria. Going back home, it brings so much sorrow. And we saw, I don't know if some of us saw the video of the young man that had to go to a place of solace to beg and for people to look into his situation. And he, he, he started, he felt, became emotional. He started crying because that was so stressful for him. So thank you so much, Chairman. In our midst also is an honorable, that's Prince, Crown Prince Chima. Crown Prince Chima, I hope your phone, your phone is up and you can hear me. So he's the National Chairman of the All Progressive Congress of Nigeria APC Italy Chapter. And he's also the President of Nigerian Community in Rome, Lazio and the Vatican City. So you're welcome, Crown Prince Chima.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes. Good evening. Good evening, the house. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. Okay.
It's my pleasure to be here today.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm happy to be here because it's something worth doing that we continuously look into issues of how to better our lot here in the diaspora. Good evening, everyone.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. So we continue with the dialogue. Honorable Samson Hodge, that's our President, Nigerian Association, National Union of Nigerian Association. You can see the situation and you also have some insights and facts. It is wanting to speak, it's allowing me to speak with facts like our chairman does, giving out facts and giving deep insight. So Honorable Samson, what would you say to how to begin this process of diaspora in Nigeria, in diaspora in Europe for us now? We are in the diaspora, the Europe part of diaspora. What would you say will be a step towards having a voice heard? And because that voice will speak for us and really put out things that the government need to understand. And this way, there will be harnessing of situations and walking towards progress. Give your intake, sir. Honorable Samson, thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening once again to guests. Like earlier on, I will beg the moderator, something could make it easier for you rather than too much title attached so that we can make progress. I want to quickly thank my Chairman of Naido who spoke very eloquently as usual. But, you know, actually, I had to join because I wanted to listen because I, I like, I like, you know, to equip myself with wise findings and, you know, probably new information. But be that as it may, I have always echoed that, you know, we need to walk the talk this time around. And the statistics are there, the facts are there. We don't need anywhere to go. We have advantage of information available for those who really do their research well because I can tell you that a lot of people copy and paste a lot of things they get on internet and get misinformation. I am not one of those persons. I think when you talk about news, there are how you peruse news. People will think that it's all about just getting anything and, you know, really it out there, abandoning information as it were. This has caused a lot of problem, misinformation, disinformation and wrong characterization. But for us diaspora, you know, this thing was about 60 years. And I've looked at it as past, present and future. And the 60 years, as I told you earlier on in my first edition, we had that. It's like the government of Nigeria currently led by the APC, so to say, shot theirself on the leg by taking, dragging this thing for the next 12 months, which has no other thing but to expose some of the things that has been ongoing for too long, not them alone. But, you know, when you have old wine in a new bottle, it appears as if there is any new thing there. It's a matter of content, the change. So I would like us diaspora, and we diaspora itself, have begin to ask, what have we even learnt? You know, the other time, somebody was saying, "Pro them syndrome," that is not even where I'm concerned with. I'm concerned more in diaspora as to understand how they can leverage on opportunities. It broke my heart that we went to one of the gatherings and I was preaching about trying to make our people acquire skills and vocation. And somebody stood up and said, "Then what Nigerians are looking for is not skills." And I wonder, that level of Nigerian, what it impacts on people? Since he doesn't know that the number of Nigerians who come around here are talking about skills. Now, when the chairman used the word "brain drain", of course, the brain drain, like he mentioned, has also been a brain, a brain gain for us somewhere ahead. What is it? When you migrate from a particular place where we are not more skilled or more equipped and you go to a society where there are opportunities for you, the first thing you do is to leverage on those opportunities. Train yourself to be able now to equip yourself to confront the situation you think you have somewhere where you're coming from. Because for me, like he said, I wouldn't want to die overseas. That's why when I walk, everything I walk, I make sure I'm always at home, remembering home. Because no place, even the woman, the American, he said, even the gold in South Africa cannot make me forget home. So for us in diaspora, there is something fundamentally wrong for those who, who have left where situations have been so bad and when they got to somewhere, they easily forgot that they left somewhere where they were grinding in full agony and saying, "If I'm able to get to a point, I would like to go back and be part of you." And that's what we are saying, getting involved. And the chairman mentioned of getting to the grassroots. Yes, it will not be easy. But I think we can start mobilizing ourselves to begin to say, let us first of all, do our contribution using some of the platforms we are creating. It will not be easy for you to go back home and start also with the people back home to start from the credo, like he said. But it's still not impossible for other people to do it. But we can actually leverage on the opportunity we have here to further raise our voice and draw partners that can also support what we think we are clamoring for and advocate truly as a one voice. I've always said it, you don't need a crowd to make anything happen. You need a few committed people to make something happen. So even as much as we are using the statistics as number, but we have not actually practicalized that number to become a force for us. So therefore, I'm urging that the new AGM that is about to be hosted in Germany, that the chairman, if he can look at it, to really change the discourse to become purely in diasporan discourse. Where matters and resolutions will be taken. And thank God, a lot of strong and able personalities are going to grace that location from the feedback we are getting. So that we can send a message that this time around is still business as usual. The politicians will come and go, but if we that are there, that this thing is touching on, does not act, they will come and change in different languages. We can see what is going on back home. Some are beginning to now struggle for 2023. And imagine some people didn't know that they would die of COVID-19. So this is how life is. Some do these things because you have people who are not visionary leading you. And whenever you have people who are myopic based on their selfish interest, I want you to say they are your leaders. Please, you better think twice because it is going to be bleak for you. So in all these things, in my operating statement, we need first of all to leverage and equip ourselves so that when we talk, we talk with evidence, we talk with something on our hands or something that we have upstairs to really, really give up because you don't give what you don't have. So I think I will stop at this for now and probably others can contribute better. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you so much, Honorable. We are, we are moving forward and more people are also coming in. Also in our midst is Honorable Matthew. That's my very good friend from London, a political analyst. Honorable Matthew, do you, do you have your phones up? I hope it's open.
Yes, it's open.
Great. You're welcome, sir. So keep, keep your phone open because we're coming to you. Let's hear our great APC, Chief Dan from Rome, Crown Prince Chima. It's your, it's your take, sir. Go ahead, open your phone.
Yeah, hello. Good evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I once more want to greet everybody in the house. The Naido Europe Chairman, our NUNA National Chairman, President, and other guest dignitaries that are online and leaders and political analysts and leaders of thought. But I want to make a special contribution in our, in this hour meeting today. And that is to say that, like I, as a, as a follow-up to what I said in the first edition, that what diasporans need to do is not just to say, train them, give them skills, let us see how we can contribute to the system, is also we begin to reform ourselves as diasporans so that the mistakes of leadership in Nigeria does not continue when we are in situations or positions of leadership back home. I would like a situation where we as diasporans, leaders and stakeholders and people of good mind and patriotic spirit, that they begin to look at how do we make sure that we are setting the pace, starting from where we are. Just like the Naido Chairman said, he's not going to be in Germany forever. He would like to go back home, contribute something to his village, to his town, to his local government, to his state, and possibly to the nation, our nation Nigeria. So in that spirit, we need to begin to position ourselves somewhere we are in diaspora. How are you behaving as a leader? How do we set the pace? So that when we get back home, we do not begin to resynthesize the errors of leadership back home. We do not begin to synthesize those bad things that are making Nigeria what it is today. It's true that the current administration is trying to set some structural, you know, foundation for Nigeria when it comes to amenities and what have you. But then it is something that people need to build on. This administration will come and go, others will come. And believe you me, I believe what is happening today, the diasporans are playing a bigger role in the Nigerian policy. And even in the social and economic life of Nigerians, like the other speakers have said. So it is about time we begin to train ourselves for this position, for this leadership position, for to be able to play a more positive role and not making the same mistakes that the leaders of today are making. I want us to focus on what are we doing as diasporans? For instance, if we are talking about laying infrastructure, like the power infrastructure, telecom infrastructure, what do we do with what we have here? How do we bring in the expertise? How do we make sure that the expertise is not just coming? If we are bringing expertise from, from Europe or from America or from the diaspora to Nigeria, are we making sure we are not helping them to soak our country dry? Or are we helping them to make sure that they impact positively? And a long lasting positive impact on our, on our country. So you see, these are the things we begin to look at. How do we positively impact? I want to create a name for myself. I want to do this. I want to do that. And it's making Nigeria what it is. We can send all.
Sorry, honorable, we, we, we are losing you a little.
Sorry, are you hearing me now?
Yes, ahead.
We can send all the billions for all I care. The, the diasporans can send even more money than the oil. If we are not positioned well synthesized, well eh eh propagated and promulgated and refined to handle these finances, it will end up in nothing. It will still be squandered the way others are being squandered. So I think it is high time that the diasporans, especially the leaders in diaspora, begin to set certain standards, set a certain space, begin to make themselves, you know, renowned leaders that in case they get back home, they contribute positively to a sustainable leadership that is long lasting and not just you go there, you become like, you know, a miss of the old broth and that will be very unfortunate. So my take is that in as much as I encourage every diasporan to continuously positively impact our country, be financially, be it with technical know-how. I will also tell us to begin to look inwards on how do we begin to position ourselves as leaders here in diaspora so that we can take all those good deeds back home to Nigeria. Thank you very much. So I think I allow other speakers to also make their contribution.
That, that was very strong. That was, that was a good one. Bringing expatriates for long lasting impression on the home country. That's a very good one. Thank you so much, uh uh Crown Prince. Okay.
You're welcome.
So we, we go forward with uh our honorable Matthew. Are, are you open to say something?
Yes, sir, yes.
Yes, go ahead now, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody in the house. Yeah, actually, if I may take my case from where I rested it last discussion. I think the major issues we should do as diaspora in Nigerians is to start creating cohesion, which you Shengen magazine are trying to help us make the move. I'm, I'm looking at the numbers here and a number of participants. We are talking of seven. And.
Yeah, it's also connected to YouTube. So we have more.
Okay, all right. Um however, I respect that mostly in the national leaders of uh Nigerian communities in different names, either Naido or the Nigerian community in their country to have a part of these ideas. Because it is only when we start talking to ourselves and then putting together our resources, our aspirations, our ideas that we can be able to come together and have a force to reckon with. If I may refer you to what I said last sitting. I said when I was the Secretary of Nigerian Community in Italy, we wrote a letter to the National Assembly asking for voting right. And in most cases, uh we are following that same case maybe as individual group. Sometimes I outright an individual, we're going by it. I believe it is possible some other setups of Nigerian communities may have done the same. We did it even as a provincial organ, not to talk of when it is done at the national level of each country. And then when it comes as a war, the diaspora movement asking for one policy changing Nigeria or the other. So uh the first step should have been the cohesion and the cohesion should have started with this form of aggregations where we bring our ideas together and then work out solutions together. And more importantly, what gives ideas most time is when too many people are following the same thing from different angles. Then they will blow you. But if we have a collective force and then have a number backing it, definitely who, somebody will listen to us. So um I'm afraid um our situation is a question of inherent qualities. Inherent qualities is that uh sometime when the system does not have a given policy, uh you make a lot of effort to survive, sometimes never to survive. Um the inherent policy here is that if I use Italy as a good example, for more than fifteen years now, when the presence of migrants start making some impact and then there was an idea for migrants to vote. Instead of the parliament to agree for the migrant to vote, they decided first of all that citizens in diaspora should vote. And that has made a lot of impact in the state all this long. Even when that one was done, the same policy of migrant voting came up again. Instead of accepting that they, they made a policy as well that even the the, the offspring of their migrants in other countries can vote. So now you see a lot of vote coming from areas like South America and some good number of them from even other European countries. And their vote on the sometime are the, 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 what do you call it? They tied to that decide the political situation in Italy where there is a lot of parties are almost at the same number. And then only one to vote can change a lot of things. So all of them look up to the um diaspora vote maybe for possible change or fortune. How come we are talking of the numbers of our population, fifty million as mentioned here, being in diaspora and nobody cares that their vote matters at all? See this hour, did this year twenty, in first century? I think the basis is for us to have a cohesion to pursue this because that is the fundamentals. Honestly, when the eh despite what I said, it, it didn't permit migrants to vote. Until migrants who, who become citizens started voting. I must tell you, the, the election of last ten years when I was there, I was the leader of the, one of the Democratic Party in trying to win the migrant votes. And what they did was, you know, in they have a parliamentary system where too many people can contest in the name of one, not just to win a, a number for a party and then the party can then go in. So they will encourage you to be a candidate so that you can get at least one, two, three votes of your people instead of actually put a vote for a white person. They wanted to contest so that your number will be joined in that of the party and then you make up the number that participates to parliament. It is on this condition that you have a, a black senator in Italy today and something like that. So I want to say if by the time we are able to have a voting right in Nigeria, all these issues we are talking about, we change, it will change in our own direction, it will change as well at home. Because over here, people will be trying to create friendship to be able to win vote, to be candidate to represent us in Nigeria. Over there in Nigeria, the parties will be looking for us instead of coming over here during the election time to look for our money. They will use to campaign in Nigeria and then think of appointing you what they like. By the time they know you will be a candidate to even to come and contest as on offices, people will be, they will be sponsoring the parties who create here, not us sponsoring them in their local um uh applications. So what I'm saying here is that the, the basis is for us to learn to create cohesion. So I want to see a situation. I, this, when I got these flyers, I sent it out. I'm happy if you of my invitees are here, very few. But I sent it out to a good number, including to platforms. And I believe a good number, everybody, some of them even call back, yeah, this is a good idea, this or that. Why do we continue to stay home? Do you think that this will change? The only way out is participation. And participation is when you bring in that your ideas, which most time are turned into vote because it is this vote that change policy. When you don't have all this, since we want you to hear to speak the best of grammar, eh express the best of what you call this eh policies that is in place, that is, that is, that is in place. But it makes little or no meaning politically if we don't have that recognition. They should not come here to siphon our money to support their political gain when they are not ready to give us recognition, take part of the whole system. So my own area here is more on our, our own cohesion in order to be relevant. Because if they don't see us as being a collective body and then when our voice in that case, not just making more statement in the press as we, as he's also, also right, but that is in addition to the fundamental things. One, one who don't have it, you want to have maybe the lightweight participation, which is even happening today. I want to say that uh we are making a move because I must, if I make the reference, just like, like what I said there before. In most, before now, most of the national eh bodies, I don't even know how it is in many countries. I made a lot of reference to Sam. Sam changed a lot of things in Italy. We all came together after the Nigerian eh Nigerian community in Italy was was asleep for a good number of years and walked it out. And not only bringing out the light, but so we saw a man who is courageous enough, who knows what it takes to push it ahead. And he has been relevant not just in Italy, but to the whole of Europe today, a lot of people look onto him for a direction. So how are we sharing that national leaders are doing something towards in this direction? And then if we can create this cohesion, we can be able to have a force to look for those basic things that requires to change our status. Without changing those things, we will fight and fight and fight. And those who knows that we are not strong enough to win will continue to stay where they are. So I want us to think of home cohesion, cohesion in there among diaspora organizations and then be able to work as a body to look for those things that solves our problem. I think that is my case here, maybe to explain better if there is any issue or question about.
Thank you. Thank you so much, honorable Matthew. Uh we, 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 your voice is loud and it's clear. There is something about uh talking and giving this, this, this good um comments. Even if it's not hard now, it's, it's put out, it echoes. And in due time, believe me, something will be done. Yes, there is power in dialogue. And when good dialogues are being made and said, sometime someday it begins to have effect. So um a- all my panelists here now, I want you to please join in that uh voice of affirmation before we continue so that we don't uh forget. I want you one by one, I'll start with uh Honorable Sam Singh Hodge. I want us to say this thing of this extortion going on at the point of entry in Nigeria. The diasporans suffering in the hands of the uh officers and extorting them, misleading them, putting them in very, very hard situations just because of COVID nineteen. So could you kindly, from your side, just say it out loud, call your name first of all and say you stand against this and we, we want it to stop. So I can have it together and send to the media in Nigeria. Thank you. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I stand as a Samson Hodge, the representative of Nigerians in Italy. Although vocally we like to condemn the actions we've recently been seen on social media and the medias and even trending in all platforms. That we diaspora earnestly condemn any act of extortion from those of Nigerians coming down to their home country, Nigeria. We all live in diaspora and we have our loved ones down there. We are appealing to government and government of the day to please, please, please put a check and we condemn those actions of those who frustrate Nigerians coming back home. We are seeking that our government is a listening government and we believe that these are periods that are festive periods to come. And we look forward that the government will act in its own wisdom to make sure that this thing is needed to the board. Please, we condemn this action. And those Nigerians who are working, please be great ambassadors of that country. We are going through eh an image deficit this time around. This is not the time to punish any Nigerians or friends of Nigerians who are arriving Nigeria. We want this to be a change and let this change be practical. Thank you and God bless you.
Hmm, strong word. Thank you very much. Okay, um um Chima, um Honorable Chima, are you there? It's sometimes your voice seems. Are you there? Crown Prince Chima. Okay, let, let's come to Matthew, honorable Matthew. Can, can you do similar uh declaration, please? In your own words.
Thank you very much. My name is Honorable Matthew Ogadah, President of Igbo Community Bedford in London and a leader of thought of Igbo community and Nigerian community in England. We, we've seen with a lot of disappointment and pain the report of what most diasporas returning to Nigeria are suffering in the hands of the mostly law enforcement agents. The idea of after all our struggles here wishing to return home is because of the law who have our people, our nation. And it should be a pleasant arrangement, to be a pleasant journey, should, should be a pleasant journey. Any attempt to frustrate such idea, frustrate such move, such, frustrate such a movement is not welcome, is condemned in totality. I join my voice to that of many who have spoken against this. I know our governments are not the against us, but for us. For this, we say, let there be a stop to every form of frustration and extortion of citizens wishing to visit their country. I know most of our foreign counterparts doesn't suffer the same thing, unfortunately. Why must it be us? So please, I want to have a check on this situation. Let it be a stop and let there be a control. Let the idea of visiting your country be a tin of joy, not a tin of um. I wish to thank everybody who wants to visit their country to continue, continue to do that. I wish the government to make a change and allow busy one visit that country. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, thank you. So um we, we are, we are putting this as a a declaration, a united declaration of Nigerians in diaspora Europe. And we're going to send it to the various media houses in Nigeria to spread the words out so that um we, it, it's a shame to be here and see a fellow brother going home, a fellow sister and, and passing through that, that, that uh pain. Pain of just passing to because you're coming back home. They want to take milk you of all your substance. That's, that's not fair. So thank you very much. Uh some of the officers are texting me that they find they are in holdups uh on their way. But I don't know how long we will last. We might not be able to wait for them. Anyway, we continue with what we are doing. Uh I, I want us to know that our lives, the change, like um Honorable Matthew said, is in our hands. Uh waiting for politicians to get it right, as we always say, will take a lifetime. So it is in our, our, is our choice to let our voice be heard. If not now, it will one day be heard. It will echo out to the authorities concerned. So don't think that we are just talking for nothing. We are talking, we are speaking out and obviously it will bring back results. Also, um I want our uh pre-national uh president of NUNAI to tell, give us an insight, data management and a comprehensive uh numerical arrangement of Nigerians in Italy is still not well, uh is not together. How can we really have these datas of data, sorry, data of Nigerians and use it also for our game? How can we have the numbers together, real figure? How can we have the numbers together, real figures reflecting eh the the population of Nigerians in Italy? Honorable Sam, simply, data management. Yes.
Yeah, um data is one thing, the management is another thing altogether. And eh if I may start with the background of Nigerians by two eighteen that I got in, I had the opportunity to be invited to the parliament eh directly to the office of the deputy which had the eh portfolio of eh Interior Ministry eh under the parliament. So one of the things I requested was also that data because there's been a lot of conflicting information. Because usually Nigerians, when they arrive here even regular, don't understand that it's their right to go to the embassy and register their presence here so that it can be collected. So I I decided to want to understand the Nigeria that I'm entrusted to lead. And as at that time, we got about eh one oh five as regular. Eh by that eh one oh five, we also had people who came from the from Libya. Eh if you add it up, as at two fifteen eh two sixteen, two seventeen, two eighteen, put it from two eh thirteen anyway. Add it up to that number, you were having about one hundred and eh about one hundred and eighty thousand. But after two thousand nineteen, also there were new entrants from registering from family union, about nine thousand added. So we had about one hundred and fifteen regular who came in visa or by family union. So put together the ones that came from Libya eh as their number varied respectively, but put together, they had about close it about another seventy some something thousand. So if you look at Nigeria, Nigeria is clocking about almost one hundred and eighty-nine thousand something approximately. Eh I can have it when I get my file. Eh that is quite a not huge number. It's a huge number because eh this data like you asked in terms of management, the reason is that the past administration didn't know that they could leverage on something. It was not knowing these are statistics that eh our quota for flugsy was collected from us by the, it was added to Ghana. Eh but eventually, after all these things, our data was finally also, our quota was finally considered, especially after signing with eh Chisley, who helped in advocating for that. Because in that fluxi, you have a quota. Most Nigerians don't know. And in this eh just current paper, they did not quite too long sanatoria. We did eh the number of Nigerians, I must applaud those few Nigerians, very few Nigerian eh 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 leaders in their place who we are honest, we have the dishonest ones, who will come to publish their names when the time is right, who were able to help Nigerians acquire the C O N. And I can tell you, Nigerians over three thousand something were able to have the opportunity, even in the face of Covid. And eh you had honest ones, when they do something, they declare it. Those who felt that they are doing something behind, we don't know. We are going to publish them and disgrace them publicly. We have all their data. The point I'm saying in the management of data is important that, under my watch, we have been able to keep all informations that we keep. We can go now and reference to eh NUNAI Bank of Information and have it. Thank God we're able to employ the services of eh Shengen Magazine, who also runs eh eh data collection and I T information.
Yes.
Eh when I said about training people and people don't understand it, they think eh eh training is all about when I come to give you handouts. Training is all about when you acquire skills that can allow you navigate through situations you are. Therefore, it is because of having this number that we're able to now engage some of our friends and partners. I can tell you that a place like a shipbuilding company, Concatieri, could reference to Nigerian community and ask for people they could employ. And today in Venice, after giving the number of people we gave them, they were able to take about six people and walk it. Right now, those people are grateful. And this is all we have spreading somewhere, some in area of education, I mean agriculture. We don't announce these things because it's all about to help the much we can. The country economically is not really eh as what you might think. Eh but yet, we are managing with the best we can. We're also looking at data as part of this management you are talking about, knowing that during this Covid, Nigeria has lost some people. It is using the necessary persons at everywhere they are to gather information to enable us be able to send across to some of those eh people that might be in need of it. What we have not gotten, you know, all these things require finance. But whatever be the case, in our scarce resources, we are managing to get what we can by engaging various people we can at different levels to be able what, to put our information that can drive us with that. Imagine if what Honorable Grant could just said, that we are leveraging on the need for us to vote from diaspora. A vote of about a hundred thousand Nigerians here will surely go a whole lot place. It will sound somewhere. But when you call it, you could Nigeria because of the eh over time, we have not trusted in what we what we do, we don't even believe in it, is affecting how it's affecting those things when we use it to drive a particular idea or initiative together. But we are not relenting. We are doing the best we can in this difficult circumstances to make sure that we use data as part of knowing what our Nigerians are doing at some of the provinces. Good number of Nigerian leaders who are there, who are communicating very well, have things that are doing. Where at time it was eh this issue of cortisone was becoming too right. We could send messages to provinces and Shengek can testify that in traveling with us, you saw what some other communities were able to do and the national body supported those ideas. That is why when some bad egg begin to bring in some of this, they are very, very, very oggy and detestful way of trying to divide people. It doesn't work. The whole thing is a collision of effort. When we are united, we can stand and stand too strong. So in data collection, like you said, the NUNAI has kept a bank where it stops, gives its information. And I believe not quite too long ago, you had to put it in a hat this, that tomorrow if we are asked, we can go in and slot it and we tell you, look at the number of things we have. We're still working very hard to make sure that we are upgrading things. So as it is, we're still following up and reaching out to other people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable. That's a very good one. Yes, because eh the data and the the management is a vital eh side to everything. One of the reasons the eh I'm at, one of the reason American government put placed a ban on Nigeria, I hope some of us might know this, um is it we they say Nigeria doesn't have accurate data of eh of its citizens. And eh it's because you you can't do anything where people are not controlled. With data, every other thing follows. So eh thank you so much eh Mr. Sam. We need to begin to really do things the way it is done. There is a formula and a way, a method to governance and leadership and carrying people along. Once it's done right, obviously progress will come. So um so Honorable Crown Prince Chima, are you still there? I think he he's not there yet. Okay, uh many people are just texting me. I don't know why they are texting. Isn't I've been here? They're telling me they're they're running late. Anyway, um with all this for now, in the mood of the sixteenth anniversary, with this information we've gathered, I I think we it's it's okay. We we've had enough for for today. The virtual town hall meeting continues. It's every two weeks. It's every two weeks and eh we won't want to waste your time. You've done well. The 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 focal points have been given. So it's it's to be abreast with situations and to move on. Yes. Honorable Matthew, you you're raising up your hand.
Yes, yes.
All right, sir.
Please, the other area of the contribution I would like us to look into is this.
Yes.
Um and among Africans coming down to Nigeria and to different eh ethnicities or nations as it's called. Eh we have always either by nature worked on self-formulation. In that case, it means eh anywhere we found ourselves, we create a small body that helps us to take care of ourselves. When we have this, sometimes we find it difficult to try to link outside. People are not so good. We are not used at, we are not used to networking. So that is one of the difficulties we are having here. Eh it works in certain nations either because sometimes you have the, you had the national body before the the state body or the provincial body started coming. But areas where some of this is eh existed from the region, they find it difficult to create a central body. What am I saying? At the time eh each country had their Nigerian movement of different ways. Even some countries, they didn't have Nigerian, you know, they have their ethnic movement that are strongly recognized. Eh I believe eh during the coming of a bus and they created what is called Naido, which eh tried its own best. It was doing well. Eh they used to have their A G M. I think eh Sam mentioned about it for a very long time. The funny thing, what is what is the effect of A G M? When you have a functional body, but especially in Nigeria, it becomes easy. But when it becomes that eh it is he who can be able to pay his tickets, his flight, mostly when he goes to countries, we do. Not everybody is willing to do that. Sometime eh even the the president or whoever the apex body may not wish to be. So you may get to a body like this where we are today. We are daily, those who are supposed to represent the institution are not there. And when they are not there, you will not take right decisions easily. And I have not seen in African movement where you said, take this office home and give it to who it belongs. They give it to who is there. And sometime when you when you come in on your own to eh organization and then you are appointed, elected to give an office, you see people who are true, who work against it. Eh he's not a chairman. Why should he represent us? Before you know it, that becomes is a problem. So eh when I say we should think of a way of harmonizing eh I think eh when eh in each thing, I I make much reference to Sam because either I came in from there, I know him very well and eh we did a lot of things together. I still remember in most of the things, events, Naido was organizing in Italy, with an Indian community used to participate. Okay. And then today, Naido is not effective enough, I must say. And then Nigerian community has taken a very much lead. I'm happy to have a leader who is ready willing and then was able to see the opportunity to make sure it is taken up and then Nigerians are taking care of in Italy. I don't know how it functions in most of the places, even in UK here, you don't have much of central organ that represents eh Nigeria. Every Naido is there working on his own. Um embassy is there trying to create a different body that tried to eh corner Nigerians from time to time and then they come and celebrate the the independence just like this and then we go on there. Eh common front is not there, even in the counter, not to talk of eh continent and talk of the. So you know, what I'm trying to say is that eh and yeah, coming back to that, this is this some policy to follow. It needs some kind of government backup to get it to work. I'm on, but it needs economic support. When you do not have all this is, we continue to be the way we are, as if to say we're not doing anything. Because if eh just like eh Naido, who has an appointment, so far that office is somehow maintained, he will be there. Anyway, you call him, he will be there, even if there's no follow-up. But you can even see an institution that has a follow-up, but they lack funding to do what they're supposed to do. So we need to harmonize. When I when I talk about this, I mean, I mean that in all the sense. Um I don't know how, what to do. I don't know who will be able to do it. Because whoever would like to do it, we need some support, need support, not just some support, as those basic support that needed, logistics, economic support to be able to reach out, let them know why we should come together and then this is what we work by coming together. If we don't, if we can't get this is done, just like somebody was speaking in the last eh meeting, we may do much of the best of grammar and mess, most of the um data manifestation. But maybe it will make it it to be a little bit difficult for us. Once again, the voting right is a basis. And then harmonize organization among Europe will make us among the world diaspora, Nigerian diaspora in the world, starting from the continent or the countries where we are, will make a lot of minutes. Sorry for taking a little more of your time again, but I think it is important to assess this point. Thank you very much.
Thank you very. You didn't you didn't take waste the time. It's all vital. Every statement, every contribution, every submission matters. Eh before we continue, I want to acknowledge the presence of eh our eh honorable excellency, I call her eh the lioness, the the great madam from eh the UK, electric woman, the woman of of power. You're welcome, madam.
Thank you very much, my brother.
It is good to have you. So we were waiting for you all along and eh
Oh, sorry.
Finally, you're here. Thank you.
Thank you.
So um the discussion has been going on, a lot have been said. Eh some big eh personalities also with us and eh eh we are we are we are moving. So eh I wouldn't want to waste your time. It's the season of independence, Nigeria at sixty. And eh actually, this is a part two of the eh the discussion. Last time, some issues were raised, a lot of eh insights and information was given. So eh I put to you, madam, what what will you say to Nigeria and the diaspora? How can the diaspora Nigerians in Europe, diaspora now, how can we begin to make impact also in our home country and bring in some change? Being that we we are seeing a lot here, we've learned a lot here. We've seen how odd how governance is, how people are being taken care of, how things work. So what will you say, madam, to this? What will you say? Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you very much for for giving me the audience. Eh my people, I greet you all. Thank you so much. Um eh sometimes when you talk about Nigeria, it's 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 a mixed feeling. You don't know whether to cry or whether to jump or to laugh. It's it's things happening back home are very, very sad. I remember in those days, the governor of Lagos State, um I think it's Fashola, he went, whenever he comes here on maybe meeting or vacation or whatever, he meets in a restaurant with Lagosians. He asks them questions. He tries to meet people in different areas. He gathers information and um you know, vital eh points from them and he goes home to implement them, you know. So your question is, how do we, the diasporians, how what, how do we transfer back home? You know, or you flames people back home. There are many ways to do it. Most of us go to Nigeria two, three, four times in a year. When we go to Nigeria, either on vacation or a meeting or even a funeral, could be a wedding, whatever has taken you to Nigeria, please make out time to see people in your community. They say um, and you call my name, yeah, but if they if see a drop of water, I cannot make a notion, but eh be do ya in it. I hope everybody know yeah, but they will.
No, 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 it's a Europe, it's a Nigerian thing, all Nigerians.
Sorry, I'm very sorry. Good, good, good thing I know. Okay, so it is good. We we try to reach our people in our locality. If you are able to meet with the youths, the for that your visit, you may not be visiting for that purpose. But once you visit, if you are able to meet probably the youths or the women for for the women's side, or the um igu or the um ballet, the oba of your, lorgo of your place, town and speak to them because those are the mouse kids, those are the representatives we have back home. You are not able to speak to the person on the street or to speak to the shopkeeper. But if you are able to reach out to one key person, one key person, you know, who will be able to represent when need be, is very vital. If we, if you're, if you have extension to your um oba or to your igu or to If we, if you're, if you have extension to your um oba or to your igu or to your eze, or even to the local village head. I'll say, this is my concern, this is what I think we should do. This water we are talking about that is not in this community, how do we do it? What do we do to get water running? This lights, this um thing, this security, which is the main issue at the moment, security, how do we do it? You understand? So let's, let's try to, let's try to reach out, let's try to have um our say. You know, put our say in a place that, plant it in a place that it would germinate. If you go and discuss a business matter with somebody who's not um business oriented or somebody who will not run with the idea, it will die there as soon as you leave. But once you are able to, to plant your idea in a fertile ground, when you are not there, it will germinate. Whoever you are able to reach out will be able to take your idea on board. And they will be able to probably reach out to you um in time to come to say, this thing you discussed last time you came, we have started implementing it, what do you think about it? How do we take it to the next level? Let me stop there so far.
Thank you so much, madam, that, that, that's, that's, that's very deep. Uh madam, there, there is something we also did, uh I want to uh want you to add a voice to it. Uh we, there, there, there is, there's a situation going on Nigeria because of the COVID. Um of people have been Nigerians coming back from the diaspora, from Europe, from different corners. Are being, are treated not poorly at the point of entrance. They are extorted, bribes are taken, they mis, they mislead them in very, in informations on how to um keep the, keep complying to the COVID situation. So I want you, if you don't mind, to add your voice and make an affirmation and condemn that act. Uh we are putting it together as a um a, a video and we're sending to the Nigerian media houses that the diaspora and Nigerians in Europe diaspora stand against this. We condemn that act of inflicting pain on people when they come back home, making them go through all this stress. Pay this money here, pay that money, do this, go here, go. And uh so we want to, we want you to add that your voice to it, madam, if you kindly do that. So you, you call your name, uh say your name and state your word uh in your own way.
Thank you, thank you very much. Um my name is the lioness, Electric White, Adabo Zonadia State. I live in London and I want to publicly condemn, when I mean condemn, capital later, condemn the act of, you know, milking money from individuals, Nigerian citizens who are coming back to their fatherland, it is absolutely wrong. We are stressed as it is in this outside society, some of us are not here because, uh because it's full of milk and honey. We don't have a choice, given a chance, given a chance, we want to leave back home, we want to stay back home. When we have the, when we have the chance to come back home for one thing or the other, we don't need extra stress. Capitalizing on COVID nineteen to rip people off is absolutely no, no. It's wrong, absolutely wrong. They will say to us, um make your COVID, your COVID test seventy-two hours before the time. There is a code that they will give you, the flight will be leaving in the next five hours. You do that over the internet and you will stay forever waiting for the code. The code will come, okay, for those of us who manage to wangle themselves inside the plane, get into Nigeria. It becomes another stress again. It is totally, totally wrong, because people are stressed already. People, some of, some of the people suffering from this are those coming from funeral, those who lost people over the COVID period. Majority you see going on this, are going for funeral, I must say. I must say, they are going for funeral, the, the body has arrived, you will not let them pass through the little money they will use to do the funeral back home. You are starting it from them at the airport, all in the name of COVID nineteen. It is Please, those who are responsible for, for this should stop it, they should look into it. People, you're talking about going to Nigeria and a majority say, ah, 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 no way, that, that, that country for me this year is cancelled. Please, let us not add small salt to an injury that's existing already, thank you.
Taken, well taken, madam, thank you very much, the lioness, thank you. So we, we are putting it together, the chairman of Nido uh did his, the chairman of the Nuni Italy did his and uh honorable Matthew, also Iguay Chima, I, I hope you're in now. Uh can you please add your voice to that uh affirm that, that condemning that act of extorting and inflicting pain on Nigerians going home? Iguay Chima, please.
Yeah, hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, but we would have loved you put your video.
Sorry, sorry, I, I had some issues with my connection before.
Okay.
Yeah, because.
What can your video come up, sir?
Sorry?
Your video, your face.
No, actually, I'm uh, let me not be distracted, I'm, I'm on the move.
Okay, oh, exactly, all right, go ahead, so let's hear you.
Yeah, so like I had wanted to say something, first and foremost, I would want us, like the Shengen media world to help in unveiling Nigerians with information on, like, there is this information on Lagos State, the police command, which you have to call in case you have problems in Nigeria, the IGP and all that. So if the media, the media world in the diaspora and uh different diaspora uh communities can be sharing this information, police number, customs, so that in case when you get there, you at least you have somewhere you can call. Even if they don't respond positively, but the fact that you're calling somebody might put a little bit of fear and sanity into these um expulsionist, let me use the word in the, in uniforms, back home. So another thing I also want us to do is that, for instance, I would want every national body, like we have our national body in Italy, we have in Germany, we have in the UK, we have in Germany and what have you. We begin to make communicate, we can publish it in the dailies that these things are becoming a menace to night diasporas coming back home. We don't have to necessarily wait for people to be extorted, to go to Berekette family, to put it on Facebook before we begin to react.
That's why we're, that's why we're doing this now, sir, that's why I want you to do.
And that is what I'm saying, it is, it is even long overdue. The national leadership in our various uh diaspora uh 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 countries should, you know, be proactive and live up to the challenge. Such issues you issue a communicate, immediately make sure that your voice is heard, that Nigerians are being extorted. There's the Nigerian diaspora commission, fine, it's true that the commission, the board has not yet been set up. We pray that that will be done soon, it will also lend voice to us, but for the time being, we can make use of such things, send a communicator back home. I believe the national body should live up to the game, be proactive, so send a communicator back home, that these things are happening to Nigerians. Instead of making it an individual thing, if O K K goes there and he's extorted, then uh then Femi goes there and he's extorted. He goes on Berekette or YouTube and then it becomes, you know, something personal. But when you make a communicate or when you make a, 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 you petition uh the, the external affairs ministry, it becomes an issue, an official issue that should be looked into with urgency. So I believe I would want to, you know, urge our national leadership, especially in Italy, in Germany, in UK, that is most affected, France. So please, live up to the challenge of putting up a communicate on this menace that is happening to diasporas. And then probably from there, we have, we have all these police numbers, like I said, the media world should help, everybody is a collective, everybody should help. If you have information on the police, the immigration, the, 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 the SARS, what have you, please share it with the people. So that in case anybody is facing such a challenge, when you get back home, you call this number immediately, they can come to your rescue one way or the other. Even if they don't answer today, tomorrow you might get them, the person calling tomorrow might not get, not get them, the person calling today might get them, you know, just like that. So this will be my take and I pray that we begin to make, like I said before, this town hall is a wonderful one that I know has led a lot of, is changing a lot of, is changing the narrative, let me use that word. So I, I want to commend once again the Shengen media world, uh you and your partners, you are wonderful, keep up the good work. You are, you are, you are, you are setting the pace, if I may say, and I know you, you keep going higher and higher. So we pray we support you as leaders, anywhere you know we can, we support and make sure that we get better life for our people. So this will be my take, I would urge the media world, the leadership, please, let us take a proactive move to come to the aid of our people.
Thank you very much, so sir, can you do your own declaration now? Uh where I'm putting it together and we are sending it to the Nigerian media. All, all you're saying is you stand against every um, every um bribe taking. You condemn any act of uh unnecessary inflicting pain on people because they've come back home due to the COVID nineteen. So anyhow, you put it, say your name and say, give your uh affirmation. Go ahead, sir.
Hello, hello.
Yes.
I am, I am Iguay Chima, Ibezim, the national chairman of APC, Italy chapter and also the president of the Nigerians, the Nigerian community and all Nigerians in Rome, Lazio region and the Vatican city. I want to vehemently condemn in its entirety the continued extortion and um and aggression and the malicious uh practices meted out on Nigerians in diaspora or Nigerians who went, traveled abroad and are coming back home, especially at our point of entry. And I pray that this has to stop, that we put an immediate stop to it, because it is not helping Nigerians and our image abroad as well. So and I also urge the federal government to quickly come to the aid of these Nigerians, so that we do not continue to suffer from this penury. And like I said, I want to also use it to, as a wake-up call on our leadership in the diaspora to immediately go into action with a communicate, to see that this extortion is no longer meted out on our people. Thank you very much and uh
Thank you.
contribute in any way positive to see to the end of this unfortunate menace. Thank you very much and God bless.
Thank you very much. Uh I was waiting for Fidel and he just left, okay. Um a, anybody there that wants to also add a voice to it, if I've not mentioned their name, you're free to um make that uh declaration. So um I will also say that with this, we bring the um independence virtual town hall meeting to a close. Uh I wouldn't want to take your time, we've been here for an hour plus now. And uh it's been very, very insightful, very, very uh reflective and I, 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 we've gained a lot. So thank you all for taking your time, your precious time to be in this uh virtual meeting. Uh the virtual town hall meeting comes every two weeks. And uh it's an avenue to make our voice heard, say issues affecting us as Nigerians in diaspora and uh see to it also that solutions begin to come. So uh your voice is important, uh as, as a Nigerian, your, your voice echoes. If not now, it will make an impact. So please don't, don't stop putting out your voice, your comments, your uh whatever you see as error that should be corrected. So thank you very much, I, I don't know if anybody has any final thing to say. Uh the lioness, do you have any final word for us?
I just, I just want to appreciate this platform, if that is the first time I'm seeing a matured platform like this where we sit down to de- uh deliberate on issues concerning our people back home. And I would love to see it move further than this, because we Nigerians, I'm, I'm in diaspora, we are very good at sitting down in our comfortable homes and talk, 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 no, no implementation, nothing happens. So a very huge thank you to the organizers of this platform. It will be my joy to see and hear our voices here collectively echoing back home, representing Shengay, which I'm, I'm, I'm just want to say thanks to my brother and my friend here, Sam, for introducing me to this platform, I quite appreciate, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, madam, thank you, you, you are so uh wonderful, uh we appreciate you. Thank you so much, um honorable uh Sam Sinhage. Uh he, he's the backbone also of the Shengen media and uh honorable Matthew, um Iguay Chima, uh Shengen representative from Ireland and Germany, I thank you all. So thi- this, this has been recorded and um uh the miss, the, the message will be sent to some media homes in Nigeria. So maybe if you see yourself, uh don't be surprised, uh it will be, it will be well presented. Thank you all, honorable Sam Sinhage, thank you, sir. So I leave you to have, yes, go ahead.
Um once again, I didn't want to really cut in, I've been enjoying the discussion, but let me quickly welcome Adabo Zonadia. Not just every, just, just anywhere. Um Shengen, I will add to the lioness is also the host of a lot of TV programs and a lot of uh that um, I mean, uh panelist guest for in the UK. She's well paid, I mean BBC already can tell you better. So I think both partnership can also help. Orgracu Matthew, maybe because you don't know, Matthew was the representative of immigrants in the whole of Padova, Vereto region. Before migrating to the UK. And uh Matthew, he lives somewhere around, uh I believe, uh if not Luton or so.
Uh Bedford, Bedford.
Bedford, so if I have the opportunity to meet Adabo Zonadia, Adabo Zonadia is the presenter and host of IFAC in UK. If you know the popular uh Ibo Festival of Arts and Culture, that is the anchor person you see, that is the Adabo Zonadia. So it's an opportunity for you guys to connect, she's a well, well-known presenter, worked for so many highly experienced and she runs her TV also in the UK. And I believe some other people will be coming on, uh like I said, Matthew Ogracu know where we started. Now, a lot of people who don't know where we started from woke up yesterday and they began to do something. But it is also allowed, because the kind of person I am is, I like to open the platform, I like to find that the way others can follow, I don't stay in a place, I move and I'm always moving higher.
Yeah.
So uh once again, uh others who are from the president of the province of Rome and other people who participated in this evening and Matthew Wandy, whom we met and uh, and uh there was a synergy for us, I believe things are, we have not yet explored anything yet. Our potentials, like they say, is there, but mine is not only to see the potential, mine is to harness the potential and transform it into an actionable plan. And without that, I won't be a part of it. So I believe more people, um Shengay with the lioness, much more strong personalities can come from there. She's well known, she knows a lot of people.
Thank you.
So it will help us more, thank you very much for this evening and a wonderful good night.
Thank you so much, everybody, so I, I would wish you a beautiful weekend, uh enjoy your weekend and uh keep the, the Nigerian spirit on. Nigerians are lively people, regardless of everything, we are good people too, we are dynamic people. And uh the, the, the wonderful thing now again is Nigerians are go-getters, we are not just there, we release trick, we make things happen. And that's, that's a great spirit, so with all this, I say happy sixteenth anniversary again and have a beautiful weekend, see you in two weeks' time. I'll be connecting with you.
Hello, hello again.
Sir.
Uh sorry, sorry if I may cut in, I don't, I'm driving like I said before.
Okay.
Forgive me for the background noise, but if I may quickly put in, please, let me use this um opportunity to plead with both the European um uh Naido leadership and the Italian leadership that is present to in matters of these people like this Shengen media world ought to be acknowledged, given awards of recognition of this wonderful thing you're doing. I know COVID is here, but I pray COVID will soon come and go, so that in whatever event So that in whatever event we are organizing, we put people like you at the forefront, at the front burner. So that will begin, your activities will begin to be recognized, I'm using this gear to push for that. So that people will begin to recognize what you're doing and encourage you the more, because I believe our people used to say that um. When you greet him, who makes the bread for the little one he has done, he will do more. So I believe Shengel world is doing well and uh, you know, we hope you keep bringing in personalities all over, leaders all over Europe. To keep talking about how to solve our problems and they will keep supporting you. Then finally, please, uh for the last, for the link of today's meeting, I couldn't, I wasn't able to share it with a lot of people who wanted to be with the meeting. I pray maybe next time you'll be able to send a link that we can share with other people, so that they can be part and parcel of the meeting.
Thank you very much. All right, sir, yes, honorable Matthew, you were raising up your hands.
Not, not exactly.
Ah, okay.
Not exactly, even though you know that have called me, I also appreciate the Adabo Zonadia, maybe we, we are together. At the Anese uh last year's Anese, end of the year, I was with, I was with the mayors, so. Know you are somehow noisy, but it's okay.
I was trying to hide myself, dad, I didn't know someone knows me here.
Ah, you're welcome, we can join hands together here to do something from the UK to something, yeah.
Definitely, Nigeria is our own, even though I'm changing my mind now, what do I say, this is me.
All right, welcome, thank you everybody. Thanks everybody, see you in two weeks' time, I, I'll be connecting with you um. Uh uh your private chat to know if you'll be on board in the next two weeks, thank you, you're welcome, God bless you.
Bye bye.
Bye.